Has it?
Okay. Now, call a meeting to order, please rise.
Second.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening.
Good evening.
First order of business is a joint appointment with the school committee, secondary, to the secondary school building committee.
Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint Mr. Sean Delaney as a member of the secondary school building committee for the duration of the project.
Second.
Second of mine, Mr. Bennett's here?
I'll second him, sorry.
If he goes to get one of the school committees.
I'll second him with respect.
Sorry. It's why you were here.
Don't fight over it. Nice to be part of it.
I just make a comment that Sean put a lot of hours and certainly when it was time to go back to the town for additional money, worked diligently with the rest of the committee and members of the board, the financial planning team meeting to make this happen. And he certainly deserves to be back on there as a citizen representative because of his knowledge and background in terms of the whole project. I think the project will continue to benefit with his presence.
Should we go over to the roll? I'm all set.
All in favor?
Aye.
Excuse me, I believe it needs to be a roll call.
Roll call, okay. Start with the school committee.
Mr. Webster?
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye. So, don't forget to, Sean, don't forget to get sworn in.
Right. I will. Thank you very much.
Guess we're gonna issue a, is there one in the packet there?
I do not see, sorry, appointment slipped, I don't see one yet. But I will follow up with the town clerk.
All right. Second order of business is to appoint the Board of Selectmen representative to the school building committee. Town council had informed us that a joint appointment is not an order, that basically the way the Mass School Building Authority reads in their documentation is that the term "town executive" is to be on the committee. And in the case where there is a Board of Selectmen, in other words, it's, the board is the executive, the board must select a member to represent the Board of Selectmen on the committee. So, at this point, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint Steve O'Leary as the Board of Selectmen liaison to the secondary school building committee for the duration of the project.
Do we have a second? I'll second that. Discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if you can entertain any discussion from the audience or not since, you know, we're not.
I don't think we can in this case.
Okay. I didn't know if you were gonna do that because I think there were some members that wanted to be heard, but.
It's purely a Board of Selectmen decision.
I understand.
For the discussion? Hearing none?
Are you saying it's purely a board discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
I didn't think that last week, but I was informed by town council otherwise.
No, I just wanna, you know, make a couple comments because I have some concerns about this recommendation to appoint Mr. O'Leary. I mean, I've attended all the meetings and well aware of what's going on. I've tried to stay up to speed on the project, and I have no conflicts of interest at all. And I think that's a big thing that has to be discussed and considered when you're making this decision. It's a very big time commitment. The meetings are at an unusual hour, and I have the flexibility in my schedule to attend, and I can be committed to make all these meetings. But I think the discussion of conflict of interest has to be discussed among the board members and be considered. It shouldn't be, it's not right that the selectman person that's representing us is gonna have to recuse himself from certain decisions when it comes especially to the landscaping. If there's any at the end where they're gonna have to make some decisions associated with landscaping, if they have extra money and they wanna make some investments along the abutters side, the selectmen should have a voice at those decisions, with those decisions. And I can be there and I can do that. And Mr. O'Leary can do that.
Okay. One of the things I did ask Mr. O'Leary, when I told him I would be supporting him, was I wanted assurance that he would be able to attend the meetings and to attend the early 4:30 in the afternoon meetings that are held on a regular basis with the OPM and architect and Gil Bain. So, he's told me that he will attend those meetings and therefore he has my support.
Mr. Chairman. Seeing that we cannot allow anybody from the school committee to speak, have you gotten any feedback from either the school committee or the SSBC?
Not from the SSBC.
School committee?
School committee, I have gotten some feedback.
Not willing to share it?
I think several members have expressed a concern and have said that, you know, Michael has, you know, been present in a lot of meetings and clearly is up to speed on what things are. Mr. O'Leary hasn't been seen at too many of the meetings, and I know that. Mr. O'Leary has been on the committee for a long time. He's certainly experienced, and he's committed to attend those meetings. I also take into account that Mr. Delaney, who represented the Board of Selectmen, is, although now he's just a citizen representative, the core group that has the most knowledge hasn't changed. And there is nothing to prevent Mr. Prisco, or myself, or any other member of the Board of Selectmen to attend the meetings and participate. I believe that every time it was an executive session, meeting, the, both the, any school committee member or Board of Selectmen member that was present in the meeting was invited to attend. So, I made a commitment, and I'm gonna keep that commitment, and it's my right.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. You mentioned this commitment. I'm not understanding the commitment.
Like anything else, when people are interested in a position, they tend to, they go around looking for support from fellow members. You yourself have done that.
I do know, I thought you were referring to something else.
No. Mr. Yul.
Well, I just wanted, are we gonna discuss the conflict of interest, or are we just gonna try to blind eye that?
I don't understand the conflict of interest.
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I'd be more than happy to address some of the statements and concerns. First of all, in relation to my interest in, as you articulated, I made the commitment when I expressed some interest in this to spend the requisite amount of time and be available for the meetings that will be required to be a member of the secondary school building committee. And I certainly want to acknowledge Mr. Prisco's attendance at those meetings, and certainly far more than I have attended, but that doesn't mean that there's any less of an interest on my part than there is in his. As far as the support of the project, mine has been unwavering and unequivocal since the beginning. It will continue to be so. I went out into the community and tried to sell the public on it, and we were successful jointly and together. And I hope to continue to build on that support and have confidence, have the confidence in the community continue to grow, and be proud of the project that's gonna be undertaken. In relation to a conflict of interest, I think what Mr. Prisco is alluding to is one of my brothers happened to purchase a piece of property on Tower Hill Road partway through this project. He was not an original abutter, he happens to be an abutter now. He has no interest or desire and is not slated to be included in any type of buffering, to my knowledge, nor to his knowledge. He has no interest in asking for or receiving any assistance from the Secretary, from the Secondary School Building Committee or the project in relation to any buffering. He's doing his own plantings and taking care of it himself. So, I did speak with him because obviously that would be a concern to people. He has no financial interest, he has no, again, he bought into the property that he bought on Tower Hill Road, knowing what the project was, having been a lifelong resident of the town, and purchased into the neighborhood. And again, has no vested interest in relation to looking for any type of buffering, plantings, or anything else in relation to remediation for his property. He's at the very tail end of the project down by the high school, lower under Tower Hill Road. So, I do not anticipate that being an issue at all. If it does arise, and I don't anticipate it does, again, I certainly would, as I have in the past, you know, fully disclose on a timely basis and recuse myself from one of twenty-some-odd members. I wouldn't expect this is gonna come down to a tie vote in many instances and would have any bearing on the outcome of any decision that the committee makes. I would appreciate the opportunity to serve. I have the time, and I'm willing to make the commitment to be there, and I appreciate the support.
Mr. Chairman, to you.
Since I was asked to make the motion, I had tried to gather as much information as I could about who was involved and so on, and be quite frank with you, most of the involvements I know from the SSB side, really not from the Selectmen's side. But I think that, and Mike, you've done a lot of work, I think it should be acknowledged and recognized and appreciated.
Thank you.
But I also think that the board needs to diversify its responsibilities and make it an all-inclusive board with everybody being involved in something, somewhere, somehow, so that we are all engaged, and I think that's very important. I know Steve has been as much of a proponent for the schools since I'd moved here in 1995. So, I, it's still a proactive and a pro-school individual being involved. So, again, going on the basis that we spread the responsibilities of the board, I think that's one of the things that we need to do, and that's when I was asked to do, make this proposal, bid, I, that's what I did. So, I think spreading it out and having the board, the members engaged, that's why. Couldn't get it all out the right way, but that's what I did.
Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No. I'm staying.
I'm staying. Three?
Three, one, one.
One, one. Okay. We have.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Mr. Chairman, if you'd excuse us, we're gonna adjourn and move on.
Yes, and thank you for coming this evening.
Mr. Chairman, before they leave, I just wanna say something about our superintendent while she's present.
Yes, I think that's.
I think that would be appropriate.
That's very appropriate.
I think you can say it on TV what we want to say.
Mr. O'Leary.
Kathleen, just, first of all, thank you very much for coming to North Reading and being with us, and I'm sorry you're not gonna be here longer. That's the disappointing part. I mean, you have just been a dynamic in the position, and really a integral part of what's taking place as far as this new genesis in relation to the schools. Your presence certainly helped sell it to the community, and we wish you extremely well in whatever you decide to do going forward, and I know we're all gonna miss you. We appreciate your service.
Thank you. Yes. I was shocked and sad, and yet I understand what I told my children, and they couldn't believe it either. You know, we as a family, we think about our education and where the responsibilities lie, and they do start from the top down. And you've done such a spectacular job for North Reading and the students. It's immeasurable. So, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ugly one?
Yeah, just wanted to say a couple things real quick. There's no doubt how valuable you have been for our school system, but what's outside of that, what has definitely not, hasn't gone unrecognized is your commitment to the whole community. I really found it amazing with your schedule that you still attended CIT events, or youth services events, or wine socials for North Reading Parks, or whatever it was, you always made the time to get out to the community, even when the evening events, even the sporting events. It was amazing. I don't know how you juggled your schedule, but I can tell you on behalf of the people in the community I've spoken to, they recognize your commitment and the dedication you made. So, it goes well beyond what you've done for our schools. It's really what you've done for our community, and I wanna thank you personally for that.
Thank you.
Mr. Foley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I'm just gonna repeat everything that I already said, you know, it's, we're heartbroken. You've been a wonderful, wonderful contributor to this community. You know, picking up on what Michael said about you going to these events, I think what's even more impressive is you've dragged your husband to most of those events too. And, but, and I don't mean drag, but what I meant by that was.
No, you meant drag. All right. All right. Cause paid is paid. All right, I did mean drag. You know, you can tell by the way he was tied up. He had the red marks.
What I meant was, you know, he came to those events, and you know, so it became for you, it wasn't a job, it was more of, you know, your willingness to be involved in the community and to also bring your husband and make it part of, you know, of your home. And you know, it just, it was just great to see you at those events, and you know, I have a hot enough time getting my wife there who lives, you know, around the corner. But, I mean, I, you know, as soon as I saw you today, I wiped a tear away from my eye because I learned a long time ago, everybody can be replaced, but some people are irreplaceable. And it's sad to see you go, but I'm sure you know what you're doing, and I'm sure you're, you know, you're gonna be fine. And we may take a little while, but you'll be fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
With a cast on my leg, I spent a lot of time on the couch, and with my iPad close by, and I was sitting there with my wife, and this email popped up, Kathy asking me, telling me and then asking me to inform the board, and I just, you can ask my wife, my face turned white, you know, I just, the, just the emotional impact of the surprise. Kathy, I think what this gentleman have said, you know, not enough can be said. I worked with you on the Community Impact Team, and as I said, you participate, you're all around town. Your leadership, though, has been just outstanding, and it will be sorely missed.
Thank you.
And I thank you from the bottom of my heart for all of your effort and the contributions to the community, and I wish you luck.
I didn't have to wait.
Yeah, there was a wire. Oh, my God.
Thank you, man.
Thank you, gentlemen.
You guys didn't have to work with us.
Thank you.
I didn't say that. It's all Jerry's fault now.
Thank you.
Take care.
Do we have anyone here for public comment? I think I'll ask that a little later too, because people generally think we start at seven o'clock. We have a proclamation from Older Americans Month.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move to proclaim May 2014 as Older Americans Month, and I'll read the attached proclamation.
Second.
Mr. Chairman, whereas the town of North Reading includes 3,000 citizens ages 60 and older, and whereas the town of North Reading is committed to helping all individuals live longer, healthier lives, and whereas the older adults in the town of North Reading have made countless contributions and sacrifices to ensure a better life for future generations, and whereas we recognize the value of injury prevention, safety awareness, and helping older adults remain healthy and active, and whereas our community can provide opportunities to enrich the lives of individuals, young and old, by emphasizing the need to take action to safeguard themselves from unintentional injuries where they live, work, and socialize, providing information on avoiding leading causes of injury for older adults, falls, motor vehicle-related incidents, suffocation, medication overdose, and fire burns, helping older adults take control of their safety and well-being. Now therefore, we the Board of Selectmen of the town of North Reading, Massachusetts, do hereby proclaim May 2014 to be Older Americans Month. We urge every resident to take time this month to recognize older adults and the people who serve and support them as powerful and vital individuals who greatly contribute to the community. Robert Bessini, Chairman, Board of Selectmen, if we so vote.
If we so vote. I see Mr. Vino here, and.
If I may.
Mr. Vino?
Yeah, yeah, double Vino. Good evening, gentlemen. I want to introduce Maureen Donato, who was our secretary on the Council on Aging. And, yeah, it's very important, you know, our seniors thankfully are living longer, and we're getting more and more every day in the town, and this is a good thing. I do wanna thank you, gentlemen, because the board has always, as far as I know, been very supportive of the seniors. You know, I know there's only so much you can do, but anything you can do, you have done, and you know, and we really do appreciate that also. I would also like to put in one quick word if I could. So many seniors in this town and their relatives do not even know about Mystic Valley Elder Services, which is a, I am a representative of North Reading Mystic Valley Elder Services in Malton, and it's just what it is, elder services. There's many, many things that they can do to help seniors. A lot of seniors I talk to, they go, "What's that about, Joe?" I give them the number, and you know, and sometimes that can help them out. But basically what I wanna say is thank you very much, and thank you for the support, and we're doing a good job, I think. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Joe, for the time you give.
Mr. Chairman, just to follow up on Joe's comments in relation to, first of all, you know, the senior center, Mary Purney, Director of Elder Affairs, the services that we do provide here in North Reading, you know, through our Elder Affairs Department and the Council on Aging and the Friends of the Council, their contributions, I mean, the services we provide are terrific. Without Mystic Valley, we'd be woefully short, and they really have been significant assistance to our community in terms of hundreds of thousands of dollars a year in services that are provided. And most recently, again, in my own mother's case, who was Director of Elder Affairs here for close to 30 years, has had the opportunity to finally, after having served on that board for many years, avail herself of some of those services, and they've been greatly appreciated and terrifically delivered, and to those people out there that have, that are senior or have seniors in their home. If you need assistance, don't be afraid to reach out, you know, don't be afraid to make the phone call. Call down to the Senior Center, (660) 5600, and ask, and they'll put you in touch with any type of services you need. So, don't be shy about it, and take advantage. And again, I wanna thank Joe and Mary and Michelle Maughan, who also serves on the Mystic Valley Elder Services Board of Directors, so they do a terrific job.
If I may, one more thing, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. O'Leary, for bringing up the Friends of the Council on Aging. Those folks are amazing. They have done so much for the seniors, for the building. They've donated TV, they've donated, they set up the library, great group. I just, I would be remiss of them if I didn't mention them, and I wanna thank Mr. O'Leary for reminding me. Just a fantastic group. And all they look for is a smile and a thank you at the end, and they're very, very good to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Don't sign the vote.
Yes.
Proclamation.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ananimos? Thank you, Steve, for reminding me. Next item on our agenda is to sign the bands for, Marianne?
Mr. Chairman, do you want me to make the motion first? I move to approve the sale of $473,529 bond anticipation notes at a rate of .60 percent dated May 30, 2014, and due November 7, 2014, payable to Eastern Bank.
Thank you. Second.
Motion made by Mr. O'Leary, seconded by Mr. Fode. Discussion, and then we'll vote. Marianne?
Sure. The first page is just the band sale itself. The second page is what we're actually borrowing for. Your third page and your fourth page are the bands that are coming due in November. That once we, these bands become due in November, we'll put all of them together, we'll go for a bond. We'll go permanent bonding on them. But I just wanted to let you know what was actually outstanding, that we're gonna roll everything in in November.
Right. And I noticed that the percentages for Eastern Bank and Century Bank are the same.
Correct.
So, your recommendation was for Eastern Bank?
Yes.
And what was the rationale behind that?
Our financial advisors, they're the ones that actually take the bids, and so they're the ones that actually tell us who actually won the bid. So, I don't know what the contract was behind it, if there was a little bit, maybe some, the verbiage was different, I'm not sure. But we're actually, we're actually going through the Department of Revenue on these, Department of Health, we're not going through Bond Council on these.
Okay.
So.
Further questions?
Thank you.
Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ananimos?
And there's only like three, like, I think, four or five pages there. The last page is for the town clerk, so there's a lot on that one.
She has all our signatures. Jeff, next time you see her, just make sure she has a record of your signature, because sometimes she has to certify it. She has info in a book, then she just signs off on it.
Don't wait for her.
The other one that processes this, so it doesn't go to town administrator?
I process it, so I can wait.
Okay.
We'll be quick.
So, you're not leaving without them?
I guess not.
She doesn't trust us, I guess.
Well, there's not too many pages.
It's that new guy you gotta watch out for.
It'll only take a minute.
Okay.
You'll get a little bit of attention. You don't need more than 10 minutes.
Should be quick.
And all we'll do is lose sign and start, okay? While we're continuing to sign, the next item on our agenda, Mr. Prisco is gonna give us an update on the medical marijuana bylaw and permitting that CPC is working on. Mr. Prisco is liaison to CPC.
Yes, so the CPC's held a couple workshops now on the medical marijuana bylaw. I think they've had some great progress. They're at the stage now where they just wanna make some final edits to it, and one of the topics that came up is the special granting authority and special permit granting authority. They are recommending that the Board of Selectmen be that, not CPC. So, I said, "Well, let me take it forward to the board."
Pass the buck.
And let me see what they wanna do. In addition to that, the other one little section that hasn't been finalized is the Board of Health and their involvement in this. They did approach the Board of Health, asking them if they want to be part of the process. I believe in the state level, the Board of Health is involved, and they can task the Board of Health to go in and do inspections of these places, to be part of the special granting authority as a sign-off. We have to, at this time, I know our health agent has asked, not, he's not interested, but I said I'd still bring it back to the board to make sure the board feels the same way. If we're not interested, then we won't put it in the bylaw. But those are the two things I just wanted to bring up and thought we could just have a quick discussion, and how you guys feel about those two things.
It's a hot potato nobody wants, I guess.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Yul.
I'm not familiar with how we progressed in that. Apparently you've done, you've been involved with CPC, and they've had these meetings. Did they express any advantages for us handling it? Or they, did they say really, good reasons why it would fit under our purview, I guess is what I'm looking to hear.
Michael?
The way they look at it is, you know, this is obviously a very delicate situation. So, if there is gonna be one of these medical marijuana facilities open in North Reading, they thought it would be best that the decision was here because of the sensitivity associated with it. But they clearly said, "If we're not interested, they will do it." They don't have a problem taking that on. But they wanna, I think, out of more respect to this board to give us the option to, as they're filling out the bylaw, to make us the special granting, special permit granting authority.
As I recall right now, we hit.
Board of Health and their involvement in this. They did approach the Board of Health, asking them if they want to be part of the process. I believe in the state level, the Board of Health is involved, and they can task the Board of Health to go in and do inspections of these places, to be part of the special granting authority as a sign-off. We have to, at this time, I know our health agent has asked, he's not interested, but I said I'd still bring it back to the board to make sure the board feels the same way. If we're not interested, then we won't put it in the bylaw. But those are the two things I just wanted to bring up, and thought we could just have a quick discussion on how you guys feel about those two things.
It's a hot potato nobody wants, I guess.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Yule.
I'm not familiar with how we progressed in that. Apparently, you've been involved with CPC, and they've had these meetings. Did they express any advantages for us handling it? Or they, did they say really, good reasons why it would fit under our purview, I guess is what I'm looking to hear.
Michael?
The way they look at it is, you know, this is obviously a very delicate situation. So if there is going to be one of these medical marijuana facilities open in North Reading, they thought it would be best that the decision was here, because of the sensitivity associated with it. But they clearly said, "If we're not interested, they will do it." They don't have a problem taking that on. But they want, I think, out of more respect to this board to give us the option to, as they're filling out the bylaw, to make us the special granting, special permit granting authority.
As I recall, right now, we had put some article in last year that was not the bylaw, but giving us...
Correct. Eighteen months.
Eighteen months.
That's correct.
So, and I don't know of them presenting a bylaw at this town meeting. I assume that if they, it's going to be October?
I believe that's correct, sir. And they've held two public workshops already, and to get feedback from the community. So they, it's progressed well. They've done a lot of work, and I think it looks very good. They're going to come to a Board of Selectmen meeting prior to October town meeting to present it to us. But they wanted to fill in these last bit of things before they present. Mr. O'Leary, you want to...
Well, it would seem to me, it would seem to me that, I understand you just bringing the board up to speed, you know, asking for any decision or debate this evening about it, but it would seem to me, we need to know what that bylaw, what they're proposing, how it reads, and it would seem to me that if we're going to make a decision on whether it's Board of Health, Board of Selectmen, or CPC, it would behoove us to have that presentation sooner rather than, you know, a week before town meeting. I would bring that message back to them. Mr. O'Leary?
Yeah, I just, I don't know what's happening else across the Commonwealth as to how it's being handled in other communities. I don't know if it's split planning, but first of all, I mean, zoning has to be taken care of as far as having it be an allowable use. So I assume they're pinpointing certain areas in the community where it would be then, from a zoning, Board of, zoning standpoint, bylaw standpoint, it's going to be a permitted use somewhere in the community, because you can't not allow them, you must allow them somewhere.
And they have identified a location.
Okay, so that's important. As far as, you know, whether we're the special permit granting, even a special permit, only because if it's permitted use, it's a permitted use. It's just a question of what oversight the bylaw is going to require. Personally, I would like to see the Board of Health, it's my first inclination, to have the Board of Health have oversight over it, because it's more of a public health issue rather than a zoning enforcement, and have the building inspector worry about it, have the police department worry about it. Police department's going to be concerned about it anyway. But I think from a public health standpoint, there should be some sort of inclusion. This is just my initial reaction to your points. I think the Board of Health should have some sort of...
I agree.
Yeah, some sort of a role.
I agree.
And oversight, and...
If we want to waive it, then we waive it, but I think we shouldn't just take it out and handcuff ourselves right out of the gate.
No, and thirdly, I don't think we're, I don't think we're reinventing the wheel here. I think other communities have already embraced it, have already passed their bylaws, and I'm sure the Planning Commission is taking a look at that.
They have.
And, you know, so I think I'd like to see what that data shows in relation to how other communities are handling it, and who the special permit granting authority is and how it's been handled. But, you know, my initial reaction to your question is, you know, Board of Health, I believe, should be involved. You know, whether it's the Board of Selectmen or the Planning Commission, generally, it's the Planning Commission has some sort of site plan review processes that they go through, which I think would be important in this particular case also.
Is part of the process.
So if they want the Board of Selectmen to be the granting authority, I think the bylaw should include some sort of site plan review with their input, to see what it's going to look like, what the facade's going to be, advertising, signage, all that sort of stuff, rather than us. I mean, that's their expertise, and never has been ours.
The process is set up that way.
Okay.
Yeah, they're going to be involved in it. They just want to, somebody has to grant the permit, has to know if the sign-on vote is to sign off on it. But they will be part of the process through the beginning to end. And that's, that's really all the discussions about tonight.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Yule?
Yes. So they're looking at, for the Board of Selectmen to be the final say on whether someone gets a, someone gets a permit. Not, a permit can be issued, but to whom is really the question, and that's where we come in. Because we're not, we're not doing the site review, we're not setting up the bylaw, the only thing that they're going to put in that bylaw that relates to us is that we're going to make the decision who gets the permit. Is that what I understand?
Yeah. To give you an example, every year, we're approving new licenses, every year. This particular license would come up every year for a vote, whether it's going to come here, or it's going to go to the planning. That's what, we'd just be part of that discussion every year. So if we want to allow them to be the granting authority, then that's what we wish, and that's what we'll do. That's how they'll finalize the bylaw, writing it up.
You know, if it's going to be, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, if it's going to be treated like a liquor license, you know, then this is where it would rest.
Exactly.
This is where it would rest.
That's why...
Then again, if there's any enforcement actions, the things that can, you know, come before with show cause hearing, necessary for show cause hearings and things of that nature, you know, those types of things should probably be included in the bylaw. I don't know if they are as far as show cause hearings.
They are.
Yeah, great, okay.
I think that, you know, we need to have that meeting with them, get some sense sooner than later.
That's fine. They're ready, they're prepared. This was just a couple little holes left in finalizing it to be presented as their final iteration. But if you guys rather wait and have them present it with those two decisions TBD, then that's what I'll go back and tell them. I mean, I'm in, I'm in favor of us being the special permit granting authority, and I'm also in favor of having the Board of Health involved in the process, and if, you know, we elect to waive a certain inspection, then we'll waive it. But I don't think we should just take ourselves, take them out of the equation right out of the gate.
My sense is, this is fairly broad, because it involves policing, you know, it involves health. Obviously, the CPC has got to put something together. We may be the licensing, uh, permitter.
Right.
I think a joint meeting to discuss just the path that they're on, and bring us up to speed on, you know, the laws. I mean, I, it was several months ago, there was some article, and some communities are interested in doing this, and there's only a limited number of communities, and I'm saying, well, if there's communities interested, the problem's going to go away, you know? But we still have to protect ourselves, so...
I'll just say one thing...
When you get a chance, let's schedule a meeting.
Yeah, yeah. Just so you know, the police department has been involved in this bylaw from beginning to end. So they've been making sure all the laws being followed, and that they're all covered within the bylaw itself. So they've done a tremendous amount of work, and they've held a lot of public meetings to make sure that the public's had an opportunity to participate and have a voice.
Okay.
But we have to have it, like Mr. O'Leary said, we have to designate an area in town to do this, and which is Concord Street. That's what they, it's a section in Concord Street, I believe, it's, don't hold me to it, but it's right near that particular property that...
The terminated site?
Yes, thank you, that's the one I couldn't think of. I was trying to think of the number. So that one there, near all the shipping facilities, just in that zone right there.
Mr. Yule?
Yeah, I understand that the CPC is obviously Community Planning Commission, and they're responsible for site plans and so on, but it would seem that, at some point, it should have moved on beyond them, and I'm just guessing here, because I'm not, I'm not sure why they are looking at setting up the whole bylaw versus just the site plan and things like that. So I'm not in it from the beginning, so it's more of an inquiry on my part, and that's, and that's that.
Okay. It's a timing issue. We're by, you know, we granted ourselves an eighteen-month, there was an eighteen-month moratorium that you could, you know, take advantage of, and we did, in hopes of all the licenses would be issued, and we wouldn't have to worry about it. But in the meantime, the community is required to allow it, and find a zone to allow it, and then if you're going to allow it, then you certainly want to have some sort of bylaws in place that would require certain steps to go through before they get the permitting. And that's where the site plan review, that's where the show cause hearing issue was, and then who the ultimate issuing authority is, and who's going to be involved. I agree, Mr. Prisco, the Board of Health should be involved.
Right.
I agree that the Board of Selectmen probably should be the ones who are going to be the ultimate grading authority, but along the way, before they get to us, they need to go through site plan review and permitting processes.
Okay. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
You'll communicate our desire...
I will take care of it. You got it.
...to the CPC. It's just a couple minutes past ten, seventeen, public hearing, Fourth of July Committee Carnival permit.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, Board of Selectmen Notice of Public Hearing in accordance with general bylaws of the Town of North Reading, Chapter 37.2, the Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing in Room 14, Town Hall, 235 North Street, on May 19, 2014, at 7:10 p.m., on the application of the North Reading Fourth of July Committee to sponsor a festival at Ipswich River Park on July 4, 2014.
And the chair declares that the public hearing is open, Mr. Vino, because you're here for their purpose.
Yes, good evening again, gentlemen. There's a one, the Fourth of July is, the committee is planning a one-day event this year, on the Fourth of July only. The event will actually be a downsized carnival, starting at noon time. It's not going to be the full-blown carnival that they had the last few years, a downsized carnival, and then the fireworks in the evening, around nine, around 9:00, 9:30. There is not like any bands scheduled, it's, it's going to be a, well, I don't want to say lesser of a ceremony, but, but this is what is planned. So you have the downsized carnival, and they're still working on maybe a few little things for kids here and there, you know, during the day, and then the fireworks at between nine and 9:30. I've had meetings with police, fire, DBW, recreation, who else? We had the big meeting here last week to go over everything last year, what was good, what was bad. Thankfully, everything was pretty good. Everything was very good, I should say. As a matter of fact, when we had our post-meeting last year, it was just accolades from everybody to everybody. Everything went very good. Couple of little things we had to work on, like parking the vehicles, but other than that, it really, it really was, it really was a pleasurable meeting. Our rain date is the 5th of July, so if the 4th, let's hope it doesn't, gets rained out, we're going to have it on the 5th, and I do believe that department heads have signed off on the paperwork the day I was here, and I don't know, is there anything else I can answer?
Transportation? What about transportation, the...
Transportation, we're going to have the buses again. I've lined up to be able to park whatever's available up in the new high school area. We will have the buses. Matter of fact, we're going to try to hit an extra bus, because I understand that, you know, we could have used one more bus at the end of the night last year, according to the police department, so we will be doing that. Matter of fact, we have a Fourth of July meeting tomorrow night, and I have that written on my list of things to talk to them about. Other than that, everything's pretty much going to be the same, and it should be a good time. One thing I do want to throw out there to the general public, if anyone feels free to donate, please do. We're still short of money, but we're going to make it. We'll make it somehow, but we're still shy. There is a website, I don't, I should have the website for me, but I don't, but there's a website where you can donate also.
It's a link on the town website for that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And you're certainly looking for volunteers?
We're always looking for volunteers. We started, well, we started, was it three years ago, this new committee? It was either three or three years ago. We started with forty people, and there's five of us still plugging away at it. Six of us, I should say. So, yeah, I mean, if anybody, you know, and the big thing is, if they can give us an hour or two, you know, we're not looking for somebody to beat up down there for twelve hours during the day. I mean, there's a lot of little things that we're still looking for people to help us with, so we certainly would appreciate it. If anybody could call me, I'm in the book, and everyone knows my number anyways, I'm sure, and I would be sure to hook them up with the chairman. We have a new chairman this year, Tim Graham-Straub. He's doing a great job. He's new to the committee as of last year. We have a very active, hard-working committee. But yes, if anyone wants to volunteer, even for a couple of hours, give us a shout. We'll be glad to have you.
Joe, setup, when is that going to take place?
Okay, okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. The plan now is, on the 2nd of July, they're going to bring in the carnival equipment that they're going to bring. On the 3rd of July, they're going to set up and have their inspections done through the state and through the town, and of course, the electric will all be set up by then. And then on the 4th of July, they're going to open at noon. And this is, we've already, Marty Tilton was in the meeting the other day, and we squared all this away. Marty did ask to have the carnival operator get ahold of him personally, so we, we gave the, or they gave the carnival operator Marty's cellphone, just so, you know, everything goes smoothly there.
Mr. Yule?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. So during, it opens at 12, so you are going to have some carnival rides for kids, is that what I understood?
Yes.
Okay, that's...
Yeah.
You're just not going to have as many?
It's going to be basically kids' rides.
Kids' rides.
Yeah. It's what they call a downsized carnival. It's not going to be the big full-blown carnival.
What about security in those, between setup and all-day Friday, and then, you know, Friday night at the park?
Well, you know, I honestly don't know the answer to that, Mr. Chair, because I don't know what was there last year. I don't think there was anything there last year, because that was one of the concerns, if you remember, the carnival people wanted to stay overnight there, and the town said no, and they did not. That was one of their concerns. I don't really know the answer to that, to be very honest with you, other than I know they're not going to stay overnight, because that's another stipulation that's been put on the carnival.
Mr. Fode?
Mr. Fode, sorry.
Was it operated the same, carnival operated the same as last year?
It's, yes and no, it's his brother. So it's part of the family, but I guess his brother does a smaller version of the carnival. So it's tied in together. Thank you.
Mr. Prisco?
Mr. Vino, at the meeting upcoming, is the police involved in that meeting as well?
Oh, yes, oh, yeah.
Great.
Yep, we have police, fire, police, we have police, fire, recreation, who else was there? Yeah, everybody was there, Mr. Prisco, yeah.
And I just want to make just a couple comments to support the event, because, you know, I grew up in Wakefield, and one of our biggest things was having fireworks on our town and having a carnival there as well, and it was probably some of our greatest memories as a family, and I really would hope this community would come up and support this event, because if you don't support it by volunteering or by just supporting it with a little small donation, it's going to go away, and then we have to go off into Boston or other places, and no one wants to commute during the Fourth of July. So it's important, and it's a great memory for your children, you're creating something that they'll remember, and that hopefully will continue on so their kids someday anticipate. And I think that's a wonderful thing about this town, if we can continue to do it. We're so thankful that you and your, your group, a small group of people that have consistently fought to keep this going, it's, you create a lot of wonderful memories, so thank you for that.
Thank you. It's, I got to be honest, it's been a struggle. The money has really been a struggle this year, because as you gentlemen all know, it's not town, it's not generated tax money at all, there's no, you know, there's no funds from the town at all in it. So I mean, I take this as a plug, if you will, if every household gave five dollars, we would be all set. I know, I know that some can't, but it's, it has been, it has been a real struggle this year.
Thank you for keeping up the fight.
And we did find one, one donor who has stepped up, I'm not allowed to give the information yet, so that has helped us out quite a bit. Well, without that, without that, I don't know if this event would have went off, to be very honest with you.
Thank you, Joe.
I don't know if you're going to have the dunk tank again, but I don't know if your prize winner over here is going to be ready for the dunk tank, Bob.
I was at the CIT. Don't give them away, the CIT's looking for them to come back.
They've talked about one.
What Steve is referring to is the cast I have on my legs, hip to my toe.
Look at so sure he come up out of the water.
Trying to get rid of me, Joe.
Oh, okay.
Anyone in the audience have any comments?
Mr. Chairman, speaking of the dunk tank, I mean, would we as a board be willing to do that? I mean, that would, I think would draw a lot of money. You know, draw a lot of money.
I don't know if they're going to have one, Mr. Yule, but you're welcome to sit there if we do.
I'm volunteering, all of us.
It's not the way I took it.
Be careful about that.
It's not going to work out too well.
I did say "we."
I tried, I tried that at National Night Out, getting volunteers, and I have to admit, I got a couple volunteers, not for the dunk tank, but they did a great job at the food line.
Thank you.
I'll cook whatever you want, Bob.
And I'll put it on a bun.
So hopefully, people listening and those that have a little bit of time or want to make a donation to make Fourth of July celebration in North Reading a success, contact, Mr. Vino, to make Fourth of July celebration in North Reading a success, contact, Mr. Vino, you have a contact number?
If you want, just, just, just call me right at my home, four-three-zero-five, six-six-four-four-three-zero-five, and I'll hook them up with the proper, proper person, and I'm not home during the day, so Colin, Diane will be happy to answer all those phones. And I hope we get a hundred of them.
And your, and your phone number is listed in the book, I think.
Yes, it is, yeah. Oh, you know how to get me. Uh, one other thing I would like to mention, too, because a lot of people have asked, and the good thing is, this is not going to affect ours. Wilmington is doing theirs on the Fifth, as you probably already know, at the Shriners. So, so we may have a real good-sized group down there, you know. Hopefully, we'll draw some people from Wilmington, and, and then you can go over and compare, and theirs will be nothing as good as the house. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Any other comments before I close the public hearing? Close the public hearing. Board members, discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I, Mr. Chairman, I move to grant a carnival permit to the Fourth of July Committee for July Fourth, two thousand and fourteen, to be held at Ipswich River Park, subject to our regulatory department requirements.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Leary, second by Mr. Fode. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, unanimous?
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you.
Okay. We have an informational hearing scheduled at seven-thirty on our, see if we get through a couple of other items. Appointment to library trustees. You get that motion, Steve?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move to place a nomination, the following name for appointment as a member of the library trustees to fill the unexpired term of resigned member Sharon Kelleher for a term to expire on December thirty-first, two thousand and fourteen. One opening room in A Parker, twenty-four Havel Street.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Leary, seconded by Mr. Fode. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Yule.
May I ask about the motions here? I'm noticing we went, I guess, from five to seven to nine. Are we missing some, uh, motions?
Right.
I'm looking at.
Well, look at the agenda here.
No, no, yeah, but.
I have skipped over the public hearing, uh, informational hearing.
No, but I'm just talking about motions, we have, you know, five, seven, or is it just tied in with the, the item? Okay.
These were tied to public, the public hearing.
Got you, okay.
Time-wise, we had to wait.
Okay, I don't know if we have enough time to get into anything else at this point. Uh, the bowling alley license is going to take a couple of minutes. Wireless communication is going to take a couple of minutes to, uh, discuss. Greg Norton being here, he did leave me with some information, and the town meeting warrant articles, we're going to go through them, so.
Do we anticipate that the twelfth is going to take a little while?
What?
Number twelve, the Bell Atlantic?
Uh, maybe not. Got the motion in the strontium.
Mr. Chairman, I move to award a lease to Bell Atlantic Mobile of Massachusetts Corporation, DBA Verizon Wireless, to be located on the water storage tanks at fifty-five Swan Pond Road in A Tower Hill Road, subject to special permits being granted by the Community Planning Commission.
You have a second?
All signs.
Second by Mr. Fode. Our approval of the bid does not, uh, they still have to go to the ZBA for a special permit. So all we're doing is taking steps to move that thing along. Greg also said that if AT&amp;T were to come and want to do the same thing, they would have to meet the same dollar amount. I hear check with the council on that. So his recommendation is that we go forward with accepting that the additional revenue for cell towers, you're well aware, we're using that in the budget process, and we are building a surplus to deal with some unforeseen things, and this just adds to that revenue stream. Mr. Yule.
Yes. Does that mean Verizon is, is going to have a, uh, use that antenna? If AT&amp;T wants to, they can use it as well?
They can put their own antennas up on those two towers, but they would have to pay the same amount.
Right.
They would have to meet or better that dollar amount.
And that's AT&amp;T, is there anybody else who could do that?
I think T-Mobile already has.
They're, they're already on.
On Swan Pond, I don't know about Tower Hill. I don't have a complete list of all of them, but, you know, clearly, uh, I can tell you this, that the reception at my home is very poor, Foley Drive, that whole area, uh, Susan Drive.
Thompson Country Club.
Oyster Drive, that is like a little hole. And when T-Mobile put the tower up on Swan Pond, uh, people that come to my house with T-Mobile do get reception. So I'm assuming that Verizon and then maybe AT&amp;T at some point will start to fill in that big area that runs up through Foley Drive, part of Havel Street, and a little part of North Street before reception comes back. At least, that's what I experienced.
Just as a more information, the town administrator did provide us with some guidance. We recommended, and again, it's a ten-year lease to Bell Atlantic, an IRP. Request for proposal was issued, and responses were due by April twenty-ninth. Both Verizon and AT&amp;T submitted competitive proposals, and Verizon's was, uh, more obviously than AT&amp;T. Verizon leases provide North Reading with significant revenues. The annual lease payment is thirty-eight thousand, four hundred dollars for each location, and it's subject to a three percent annual increase for a total value of four hundred and forty-four thousand, two hundred and fourteen dollars over the ten-year time period.
Thank you, Steve. Further discussion?
No, I'm fine, thank you.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Okay. Informational hearing, June Town Meeting. I need to list here. You got a motion to open that hearing?
Yeah, let me just see if I can find it, yeah. Right there. Let's see. Fourth of July.
Is there not even that five?
I do not find it. Uh, Mr. Chairman, notes public hearing, in accordance with the general bylaws, Town of North Reading, Board of Select will hold a public hearing in Room Fourteen, Town Hall, two-thirty-five North Street, Monday, May nineteenth, two thousand and fourteen, at seven-thirty P.M. The purposes of informational hearings on the June, Hail June Town Meeting.
Second.
Motion?
It's just a notice, it's just a notice, it's just a notice that the informational hearing is over. Uh, let's see, yeah. North Reading Board of Select does hereby notify the residents of the Town of North Reading that hearings on the following articles contained in the June second, two thousand and fourteen annual Town Meeting warrant could be held, May nineteenth, seven-thirty P.M., Room Fourteen, Town Hall.
So I'll walk through each article, and while we're at it, we'll kill two birds with one stone. We'll also assign the member of the board who will be reading the motion.
Mr. Chair, don't we normally do that the, uh, before the Town Meeting?
Yeah.
Well, this is before the Town Meeting?
No, but I mean, the meeting before the Town, uh, at six o'clock or.
We're pretty, no, no, we usually do it before, huh?
Yeah, we've been doing it before, yeah. So there's a budget, Article One, Liz, are you going to help us with this?
Yes.
I'm, excuse me, Mr. Chair. If you don't mind, can we project it so the people at home?
Yeah, I think she's prepared to do that.
Thank you. No, it's okay, I forgot to. Should. We'll ask North Camp to take a quick peek and make sure that they can see. I could fall asleep.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Yule.
Yeah, please. Uh, with regard to the, uh, articles and so on, uh, I know the board has worked very hard to develop this, and everyone is by far more well-informed on certain, uh, articles than I would be. So that when we assign needs to some articles, I'm sure there are some questions I may not be able to answer. So I'm asking you to assign the articles that will not interfere with, with someone else's knowledge.
I, I had that in mind, Jeff, to be fair to you.
So you could have snow and ice deficit.
There's a string, there's a string of reauthorizations. Uh, that generally, we do all as one, run them together, so I was going to ask you to do those. And then there may be one or two others that, you know, don't require, or you have the background as a result of something that we learned tonight.
You can do all they pass over as.
All the ones we pass over, you can have a big win.
Let me know when you're ready.
I'm ready.
Okay, so, uh, Article One was a budget amendment. This is a budget amendment to our current fiscal two thousand and fourteen budget. Our recommendation was to be made at Town Meeting primarily because we didn't have all the numbers. I take it you have numbers tonight?
We do. We have the one item that had been discussed at financial planning of the utility van. And we plan on funding the purchase of that with free cash, um, in the amount of twenty-four thousand, thirty-five dollars. So the van will cost two-four-zero-three-five.
He's going to get you a microphone.
Just to bring those board members that are unaware of this issue, uh, we were notified a week or two ago, just before our financial planning team meeting on Friday, that the school van that the capital, utility van that the capital committee had just dropped off the bottom, they were the next item. The whole front end fell apart. So Mr. Conavelli, uh, the town mechanic took a look at it, and when I spoke to Mr. Conavelli, we were talking about twenty-five hundred dollars to repair the front end. Sounds like it needed ball joints and bushings and things like that. They also discovered that there was some welding that was needed for fifteen hundred dollars. Correct me, Dick, if, I think those are the numbers you gave me. And then he noted that they had no history of maintenance on that van. Evidently, the van was being maintained by the school department directly and not by DPW. So Dick was also concerned that, uh, there probably, or maybe some other items, and that to put that kind of money into something that is going to get replaced next year for sure, based on, you know, where it was on the, on the capital list. We discussed it at the financial planning team meeting. It's something that the school department uses all year round, and it was felt that, uh, we asked, uh, Mr. Bell Conison, Finance Director, Ms. Paveo, to come up with a, a solution. You know, one would be, would have been to go to the Finance Committee and the Reserve Fund, another, and we decided we'd just take it from free cash that, uh, it's not next year's free cash, it's current available free cash. That we'd put a little less into the debt stabilization fund to cover that. And not, uh.
No.
Actually, the snow and ice deficit was largely.
Oh, the snow and ice deficit.
But then encumbrances were closed that were no longer needed. So that, we had estimated when we were first, you know, seeing how much we had to go into the debt capital stabilization, a less amount of free cash being available. We knew that we wanted to put two-fifty in the debt capital stabilization, and we had a certain amount to pay for capital that was approved by the CIPC. So we ended, we were, you know, ended up with about thirty-six thousand of encumbrances that closed in snow and ice. So there was that available in free cash, and, you know, we were going to put it towards, to the debt capital stabilization. But like Chairman Messere said, that it was going to be approved next year at CIPC. So, you know, one way or another, it was going to be purchased, so.
So any questions or concerns about that? Do we want to do a vote to recommend that?
I move to recommend Article One as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Leary, seconded by Mr. Yule. Discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Twenty-four thousand.
Who would like to?
Sorry, the amount was, how much for the van again, twenty-four thousand, right?
Twenty-four thousand and thirty-five dollars. And who would like to present that? Do two things here, not after.
Jeff can handle that one. Because I can, yeah?
Okay.
So much getting out of it.
Okay.
Just a man.
Article Two, snow and ice deficit.
The total snow and ice deficit, um, that is on the books and does not include reduction by the reserve that we reserve every year, is five hundred and fifteen thousand, nine-twenty-four. The amount to be covered by free cash at June Town Meeting is two hundred and sixty-five thousand, nine-twenty-four. So two-six-five-nine-two-four.
And the rest is the result of the fact that we have, keep some in?
Yes. We keep two hundred and fifty.
So we're on up a couple hundred bucks since the last time we discussed it.
Sure. So what happens is, from now until June thirtieth, um, meal tickets are turned in. Also, if there was any damage to a resident's mailbox, um, you know, that, that gets covered once they submit the correct documents for reimbursement. So, you know, there's going to be some small amounts like that, so.
Okay. And we've already recommended it, but let's just make, you want to redo it since we have a different number?
So I move to recommend as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Leary, seconded by Mr. Yule. Discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous?
Who's going to do it?
Oh, thank you, Michael. Volunteer to do this, snow and ice? Mr. Fode. Okay, appropriation funds to capital improvement stabilization fund, Ms. Paveo?
Sure. So the amount, um, like I mentioned earlier, was going to be two hundred and fifty thousand, but now it's going to be two hundred and sixty-two, five-five-five, two-six-two, five-five-five. And that, like I said, is a result of free cash being left after the van purchase.
Okay. entertain a motion to, uh.
Move to recommend.
Second.
As.
As presented.
As presented. Motion by Mr. Leary, seconded by Mr. Yule. Discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And, uh, Michael? Okay, Article Four, transfer funds to water stabilization fund. Ms. Paveo?
Yes, um, the amount of this transfer is one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, five-seventy-three. And that's from water retained earnings.
One sixty-eight, five-seventy-three?
Yep.
Yeah, that's what it's been.
Does that bring us up to the total obligation of the money that we took out to cover the water? Fifty thousand, short, still, okay.
We already voted on it and recommended it.
Yeah, just revoting when we, uh, when we have a final amount, that's all, just, Mr. Leary.
Move to recommend as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Leary, seconded by Mr. Yule. Discussion.
Just, uh, what, what, this is to the water stabilization fund.
Yeah, this is the money we took out, that we set the water rate such that we would create a surplus to put that money back. So we're still fifty K shy of the goal, but we were going to do it over a period of five years. Okay, who would like to do Article Four, Mr. Leary?
No, I'd like, if I could suggest?
Yes.
Since I'm going to be up there, rather than have Mr. Yule get up than Mr. Fode and myself.
Yeah, I think that's right.
Maybe we could just do it in a little series, if, uh, if you want to go back and change the first three and.
Anyone have an objection to that?
I'll just do all, I'll do all of them, and I'll do number four, number five, and then I'll do one through five.
Well, let's keep the first two the way we have it, okay?
Okay, that's fine.
So you'll do three through...
Whatever you want.
All right.
How long you want me to step there? I'll do, I'll step in.
How many do we have, 20? Thirty-three?
Thirty-three. Yeah, but we've got that whole string there. We try to do all at once. Appropriate money to the stabilization fund. Ms. Paveo?
Uh, pass over.
Is this a passover?
Yes.
Yep.
Mr. Frisco?
Yep.
Recommendation?
Move to recommend passover.
Motion by Mr. O'Leary, seconded by Mr. Yule.
Yes.
Moves to pass over. Discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Article Six, appropriate funds for overlay deficit.
We don't have any debt, right? Debt, no deficit?
No deficits, so it's a passover.
A passing over.
This was just in case one of the Verizon cases got settled from past years, but we have, we just checked on it last week, and there's still no resolution.
Mr. O'Leary?
Move to recommend passing over.
Second.
Mr. Yule's, seconded by Mr. Yule. Discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
So Mr. Chairman, I'd like to...
Unanimous, this is the move to pass over.
Yeah, so if I could, maybe give Article Five and Article Six to Mr. Yule? They're both passovers?
Okay.
Sorry.
I'm sure Mr. Yule doesn't mind?
No, I'm going to sit down now. I'm done with those two, I'm done.
This is a tough job.
You're going to sit down. Okay, selection of town offices. Now we're basically rolling into the 2015 town meeting. Select town offices. Mr. O'Leary, you want to cover those?
Sure.
I'm going to try to stay sitting down, because I don't know whether I'm going to be falling over my leg yet or not, so hopefully not, but...
We can bring the mic to you, too.
Mr. O'Leary, we already recommended that. We've also recommended reports, no action required.
So Steve's going to do that, too?
Yeah. Okay, and who's going to do all the way through 11? Can I, Steve?
Sure.
And we've already voted those, and I don't think there's any issues.
Just for informational purposes, for the information public hearing, you might want to just say what Article Nine is, what Article Ten is.
Okay, sure. Article Nine is authorize the Director of Public Works to accept easements. This is a standard article, it's in all of our annual town meetings. And we authorize the Treasurer to enter in a compensating balance agreement, so that we don't pay interest on our checking accounts. Article 11 is authorize Chapter 90 highway construction. That allows the DPW Director to accept and to utilize Chapter 90. Dick, do you know what the final number is? The 506-997, hasn't changed? Okay.
It's actually been put in the books. Mass Highway already given it to us.
They're already giving it to us?
Yeah, it's been...
And we have the cash, or just we have the approvals?
We don't have the authorization, but Mass Highway is putting it in our account.
The money?
No, they reimburse us, so...
But they've allocated the money for the authorization, okay.
So once we authorize it, yeah?
Then we can spend it.
Then we can spend it. All right, that's good.
Okay, Article 12 is prior year's bill.
We do not have any as of right now.
None. Do we, we want to just wait for town meeting then? Because there may be one yet?
In case one, you know, floats in. But typically, they're in a small amount, a dollar amount, so...
And that requires a four-fifths vote, and we've already voted to recommend a town meeting, we'll keep it that way. Who wants to do that? Let's see.
If you want me to do that, too, that's fine.
Let's see.
We'll give it to the budget.
What?
Listen, if you want me to do that one with the other ones, then you're into the budget.
Okay, I'll do that, Mr. O'Leary. Okay, the operating budget. As published in the warrant today, that has been mailed out, is...
It's the budget.
Now, this get mailed out when, because it hasn't arrived at my house, so...
Yeah.
Just received, okay, so it'll be going out in the mail probably in the next few days, it'll show up at everyone's home.
You want, let me, you have a mouse, I can do it right here.
So this doesn't have the...
Thank you.
So with the budget, though, remember, we vote debt separately, as debt is a two-thirds vote.
Right. We have two articles.
So...
Or two pieces of, we split that article into two motions.
So the operating budget is $55,904,880. So 55904880.
That's the total.
That's the operating budget, less debt.
Less debt?
Yes.
Okay.
And the debt amount is 7747273, so...
7747...
273.
273. And that debt number is both exempt and non-exempt debt. So a large portion of that is the school bonding.
Yes, yep.
The debt, the debt number again, when we're...
Yeah, please.
77...
Yep.
47...
47.
273.
Thank you.
For a total of, you have the total?
63,652153, which is printed in the warrant as all costs, under selectmen recommendation and FinCom recommendation on page 12.
So it's marked that we've recommended it. I entertain a vote for those numbers, Mr. O'Leary.
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. O'Leary, seconded by Mr. Yule. Further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Frisco, would you like to do this budget?
Sure.
And if not, I will do it.
No, no, I got it.
After you get beat up on that budget, we'll go to Capitol. Mr. Fody's going to do the Capitol. See if Jack's...
No. This page's 28.
I'm sorry.
We're going to have presentations like we've done in the past?
Well, one is, I'm expecting that, A, is that we have a slide for each article with the appropriate numbers. Two is, and Mr. Keller isn't here, but we have that complete report on the Capitol. Expect that... One is, we'll, in the motion, we'll have a complete list of this, and then we can explain exactly... You know, that's a good point. I think we should talk to Dawn and have the Capitol Planning Committee do a report at the beginning of town meeting.
Sure.
It's a reasonable thing to do.
Yeah, it'd be good for them to actually just present...
Yeah, I mean, it's a, there's a very good report together, and it could be, you know, summarized in a few slides.
Nothing's changed, Liz, from what's in the warrant as far as the source of funds?
No.
It is as printed in the warrant.
Printed in the warrant and is presented to the board by the Capitol Committee.
Yes, right, in the Capitol Plan, and those funding sources that were listed are the funding sources listed here, so...
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend Article 14 as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. O'Leary, seconded by Mr. Yule. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Mr. Fody will handle that.
Yes.
Okay, fund retirement obligations.
Yes, it's as printed in the warrant, $130,000, raise and appropriate.
I already recommended it.
And this is to fund retirement obligations for employees that have reported that they are retiring in fiscal 2015?
Yes.
Which includes school?
Yes, town and school.
Right. Mr. O'Leary?
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. O'Leary, seconded by Mr. Yule. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Let's see, what do we have here?
Yeah, this one, the next one we were waiting for.
We don't have a dollar amount as of yet.
Sorry.
Steve, you want to do the retirement obligations?
Sure.
Basically, with Article 16, transferring funds to solid waste stabilization fund, it would be any excess funds or anticipated excess funds in the stabilization, the sanitation budget. That's what this fund would be.
Right, I mean, you're looking at revenue and expenses.
Correct.
But you don't really have a year-end number.
Exactly. So that's why it's very close. Last year, it was very tight. We did transfer about $23,000 last year. So, you know, I would say that this, we would have a number, if there is one at town meeting. We don't have one right now.
You think we'll have one at town meeting, or, it's almost like something we should do at town meeting?
Well, you can't do that once, the ones that closes, so...
Yeah, we can't, so we have to, we have to take a guess at it.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yep.
Chairman, I move that we make our recommendation at town meeting.
That's already there, Steve.
I know, yep.
Okay. Do you want to handle that one, too, Steve, while you're up? Okay, there's a motion, and Mr. Yule, all in favor? And she did make a motion?
Yep.
Transfer funds to other post-employment benefits liability trust.
It's pass over.
Pass over.
Passing over. Okay, Mr. Yule is going to do this one. It's a passover, Mr. O'Leary.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend passing over Article 17.
Second.
Motion by Mr. O'Leary, seconded by Mr. Yule. Discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Who's the best person to do this one? Is that you, Steve?
Probably the next two.
Okay. Where are we with that?
I don't, Mr. Karuji is here, the Secretary of School Building Committee. Chuck, you want?
Want to come up and comment, see?
Article 18.
You didn't have to be here yet, I was going to call you.
You're early.
You're early.
As you know, this is a land slot with Mr. Gill, Kevin Gill and Susan Gill on Park Street. They have the paperwork, we're still waiting for the signed copies to come back from them. They have to get a couple of copies from the bank to release it, and I think they're waiting on that.
Will this be in place by the time town meeting?
I hope so. I hope so. We'll get to them this week.
And again, my recommendation would be is that we ask town meeting to approve it, you know, even if it's afterwards, we can still, you know...
There's no money involved, well, I won't say that. We do have to register the land slot with the court.
Yes, but I mean, there's no payment.
No.
But there's no payment for the land?
Yeah.
Okay? And we're only talking 27 square feet.
27 square feet?
No, it's 120, 120-some odd square feet.
Yeah, but...
So it's very small parcel, right at the corner of the entryway today.
Somebody can make the turn.
Right, that's to do the curve cut.
Through the curve cut, which they happen to own. So it's been very friendly to date, and hoping that just continues that way. And in return, they're going to get an easement from the town to access their property off of the driveway into the side of their property.
Okay, do we want to change our recommendation at this point to recommend?
Well, it...
Or do you want to wait?
I would recommend that we take action, favorably recommend, which again would send another signal to the Gils, that that's our intention.
Right, that's what I would like to see happen.
Is that your motion, Mr. O'Leary?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend Article 18, second.
Motion by Mr. O'Leary, seconded by Mr. Yule. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Article 19, Mr. O'Leary?
Article 19 is a fallback position in case the negotiations with the Gils don't go well, and we still obviously need the small parcel. And what this would do would be to authorize the board of selectmen to acquire by purchase, gift, swap, or eminent domain. So that's if it becomes hostile, which I don't anticipate, but this is just a fallback position in order to keep the project on schedule.
So we're going to leave that as a recommendation to be made at town meeting, hopefully to pass it over?
That's right. Our intention would be to hopefully have it all finalized by town meeting, Article 18, and then we could pass this one over, but, so I would move that we make our recommendation at town meeting.
Okay. Next.
That's a, that's a motion, seconded by Mr. Yule.
Seconded, yeah. I didn't realize that was a motion.
Okay, motion by Mr. O'Leary, seconded by Mr. Yule. Discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Article Nine, I'm sorry, Article 20, fund repairs to town buildings.
Pass over.
Until October, yes.
October town meeting. Mr. Fody?
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend passing over Article 20.
Second.
Motion by Mr. O'Leary, seconded by Mr. Yule. Discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Article 21, fund renovation of Room 14 Town Hall, $50,000.
Pass over.
Passing over?
Sadly.
Mr. Fody?
Chairman, I move that we pass over, recommend passing over Article 14. Excuse me, Article 21.
Second.
Motion by Mr. O'Leary, seconded by Mr. Yule, to pass over Article 21. Discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Who's going to do that?
Joe.
Okay, now we get into appropriation of bond premiums to reduce middle high school project. What this involves is, we borrowed another roughly $17 million, which includes a bond premium, plus a bond premium.
Um, yes.
$934,000.
So they reduce the amount that we actually borrowed by the premium.
Right. So we're applying the bond premium to the borrowing, which is needed anyway. So, so you understand how that works, Jeff? The, it's probably easy to explain, on the original borrowing, we borrowed $50 million, and we got a $5 million bond premium. Typically, the bond premium is used to offset the cost of the $50 million when you're doing the payment back. But because we needed to borrow more money, and we had a very good percentage, and a lot of other schools were doing the same thing, DOR, after, how many months did they take? Quite a long time.
Almost a year.
Came back and approved the fact that we could use that money as part of the expense, rather than have to borrow that additional $5 million at some point, anyway, so. So, oh, what this is doing is the same thing on the second round of borrowing.
Thank you.
So we're recommending, we've already recommended this.
Move to recommend Article 22.
Second, Mr. Yule? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? I've kind of lost track of who's doing most of the heavy lifting here.
Yeah.
Mr. Frisco, you want to do this?
Sure.
And reappropriate Hillview borrowing proceeds. Have we squared this away yet?
To my knowledge and discussion with Bond Council, no, we have not.
My understanding is they've gone forward, and they're using available funds to do the boxes, is that correct?
That's, that's...
That's what I think George said. So I think this is a pass over.
You know, I think that they still want to have discussion at town meeting. I, you know, they had me go back to bond council and ask the question if they could use the $89,000, that was the dollar amount that they wanted reprogrammed, of the $300,000 that they borrowed for the facility improvements, to see if they could use a piece of that for the irrigation system. The problem is, is that it needs to have a life of 16 years or more, because we had a ban for one year on the $300,000, and now facility improvements have a life of 15 years. So they're paying that $300,000 over 15 years. Really, they're paying it over 16, so that's why the project that they reprogram these funds for needs to have a life of 16 years or greater. The irrigation system has a life of 15. So they could choose to reamortize the debt over 14 years, and then it would have a life of 15 years. But that would, you know, increase their annual payments.
So, we'll make the recommendation at town meeting, I think that might be the best thing.
Yeah.
We've already voted to do that.
You explained it perfectly, I mean, that's the situation.
And, Mr. O'Leary, you cover that?
Yep.
Conservation revolving fund, all these reauthorizations, there's conservation revolving, Damon Tavern revolving, Rankbowl revolving, recycling promotion revolving, Department of Elderver Fairs revolving, emergency management, All Hazards revolving, youth services revolving, library activity room revolving, and Board of Health revolving. The last of all of them, I entertain a motion, and we've already recommended them, I don't even think we need a motion. Who would like to, hopefully it's going to be one article with everything on it. Mr. Yule, would you like to do that? I think that is it.
Hopefully, town meeting goes as quickly.
We have to make sure we get people to come.
Hell, it's a regular town meeting, most pleasant motive.
Yeah.
But I hope they come anyway.
Yeah, we want people to come.
Okay, so we've gone to the, does anyone here in the Candlewood?
Mr. Chairman, I move to close the hearing on June Town Meeting warrant articles.
Go ahead, a second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed? unanimous. Before we get into liaison assignments, anyone here from Candlewood Lanes? Can we do that motion, Steve, and just get it?
Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the bowling alley license for Rocket Entertainment, Inc., DBA Candlewood Lanes, 35 Main Street, to expire May 1st, 2015, subject to our regulatory department requirements.
Second. Did I hear a second?
Yes, that's it.
I'm sorry. Discussion, I know you, Mr. Prisco, have voiced a concern over this.
I told you at the last meeting, I wasn't going to vote in favor of this, only because they forced us to spend far too much time and energy to get them to come in and submit this license request. You know, our resources are slim as it is, and it's completely unnecessary, so I'm not trying to put them out of business, but I am going to vote no, just to send them a message to make sure that next year, we don't have to go and spend our limited resources in our limited employees' time to chase them down. We shouldn't have to send multiple certified letters and be calling them and so on and so forth. It's just unnecessary, and that's where I stand on that.
For the comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Yule.
In light of what Mike is saying, I couldn't agree with you more, I haven't been involved in this, but our employees have many things to do, and you do repetitive work in trying to get something, someone, a business or a person, to do something that all they have to do is an initial response, that's kind of disrespectful to the town and the townspeople. So, I appreciate your point, but we can't put them out of business for something like that either. So, I mean, I'll be supporting it, but we need to somehow come down harder on businesses that do this.
Well, we could ask the town administrator to put together a letter of concern.
Yeah. Put them on notice or something.
This behavior, if it continues.
Places their license at risk.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Something like that.
That's a great idea. Thank you for putting that together.
So, we have a motion and a second for the discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Four to one. Okay. As you know, it's the chairman's responsibility to make liaison assignments annually for the board, the members representing our various committees and subcommittees, et cetera. So, I have spent some time giving that some thought. This is my proposal. Although it is the chairman's prerogative to make these, I'm not necessarily against any one individual wanting to trade with another individual.
Mr. Chairman, if I may? Yes, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Yule.
Again, I think for at least the past two years, this board has been working very diligently with many of the committees. I'm not going to come here and say, I want to be on any specific committee. I think you guys have your plans, have your ideas, and committees you want to work with, and I believe in working with the board, and whatever you feel that you want me to cover, I'll be more than glad to be responsible for that commitment.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
Thank you for your time putting this together, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, and we will enter this into the minutes. It's accepted. Next item.
Need a motion on this?
No, I don't think so.
I like saying second.
Mr. Balakonis left us a administrator report. Have I skipped anything? I don't think so. Before we go into executive session, so arrangements have been made, there'll be a public informational meeting with representatives from Tennessee Gas Pipeline Company, and has been rescheduled to Thursday, June 5th. It'll be held here in the gymnasium of Town Hall. Didn't put a time down, but I think.
It's Thursday, it's probably 7 o'clock.
I think it's 7:00. I think I may have it on my calendar. That number's been bounced around, I didn't put it in. I'm going to, purposes of this evening, and well, maybe if you're going to put this in the paper, we'll double check the time, but I think it's 7 o'clock. The second item, I, my sense from board is that we're going to hold off our next meeting. And we have a memo from Mrs. Minton, the library director, indicating that she will be retiring in August. I'll just read that. There's not much of a memo. The memo is to inform you, I plan to retire on August 29, 2014. So we'll have an opportunity to talk to Mrs. Minton before that date. We'll just hold off on that, but her retirement information is included in the budget, so.
She also will be missed.
What? Yes, yes. I thought we'd just wait until she's present to. Is there something on this club license here? Steve? We've already signed it, right? Then we s.
Yeah, I don't see anything. There's a signature missing there?
Well, Mike isn't signing it.
Oh, he didn't vote, okay.
No, in fact, I think he did sign it. Whose signature is that?
That's mine.
Oh, okay.
Is it, this is from the Hillview, right? You took that out of the pack?
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me. Yes.
That's an old one, right?
Yeah, that's a old business discussion that we're going to have.
I'm mixing two things up.
Okay.
Thank you, Michael.
No problem.
Okay, on old and new business, and I'm just going to start, because we got a.
Is that me?
No, it's Mr. Maseri's belt.
I'm sorry I didn't shut it off, I apologize for that. We have a request from. Don't shut up. Sorry about that. Passed this out. It's a letter from Chris Carter. So this is a request from Chris Carter to the board. They would like to extend the operating hours, the Sunday operating hours of liquor license from 12 noon to 11. And, it's my understanding that that's a board decision, it's not an ABC decision. The reason is that they have a lot of outings that take place on early Sunday morning, and then this will provide them, they get off the course, you know, before noon, this will provide them the opportunity to offer a sandwich and lunch and a drink if they want. One of the wishes of the board at this time.
You want to go to?
Mr. Prisco.
Yeah, I could just add a little bit, he's had a standard group of golfers that play on Sunday mornings, and it's a sizable group, and they are finishing around 11:15. And so he would like, they would like to, they're real excited, the feedback that he received, all positive, that he has the opportunity to offer them a beer after around a golf, and this particular large group is around 11:15, and that's why he's out making this request. Which I'm in favor, I support it.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, and if you recall, gentlemen, last year, we requested that the board take a look at, and they favorably considered allowing ourselves to modify liquor licenses for Sunday 晚上after 10 a.m. for special events and things of that age, for all the liquor establishments in town. This certainly would be in keeping with that, and again, at this particular juncture, I think, GFMI, but Hillview in particular could use any type of assistance they can get as far as keeping the leagues that are there, and the group of people that currently come. Obviously, the lack of a pub has had an impact on play, and it certainly would enhance their ability to keep play here at Hillview. I don't think it's an unreasonable request at all.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, I don't think it's unreasonable either. I know they're only asking for 11 a.m., but why not give them 10:30 a.m.? Some golfers finish earlier than others, but it's a hot day, it's a hot day. So, I don't mind if we did it for 10:30.
I guess, I understand where you're coming from, but he's only asking for 11.
I understand that.
I think I give him what he's asking for.
But we have, we have to 10 a.m., so we made it a point to do, to allow 10 a.m., so.
He's only asking for 11.
I understand.
I agree with Mr. Fody, I would really only, I'm going to agree with what he's asking for, I think it makes a lot of sense.
He probably doesn't want to be before that anyway.
There are some homes in the area right around.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'll finish.
10:30.
It's, the chair, my only issue with going any early, other than the fact that Mr. Carter has asked for, is there are homes in that area, I'm sure he knows better, so.
Mr. Delaney.
He's asking for 11, I'm willing to support 11.
Yeah, Mr. Delaney's probably the only one that would be drinking at 10:30. It's one golf.
I may join.
One golf.
Mr. Karuji is a member of the Hillview Commission, you have a comment?
Yeah, I do.
Come on up.
It's only a beer and wine license, it's that often, okay, just so.
Yeah.
And if Mr. Carter doesn't control it, what happens is you do have people drinking in the parking lot. So this way, he has a handle on it, and he can control it, he can stop whatever's happening in the parking lot. So that's one of the big things. Just keep that in mind, all right?
So it's probably not a written motion, Mr. O'Leary, could you comprise a motion?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move to modify the current seasonal club license to sell wine and malt beverages issued to Gulf Facilities Management, Inc., DBA Hillview Snack Bar, for allowing the sale of wine and malt beverages on Sundays from 11 a.m.
Second.
Motion by Mr. O'Leary, seconded by Mr. Yule. Further discussion?
Sure.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And this is why it's good that you're doing, you're the clerk, I could never have done what you just did.
Joker.
That's, you're sitting next to him to learn.
Yeah, and this whole historical thing about, you know, lease junior guys getting the clerks, that's out the window now.
One other item that's a new and old before we do the normal new and old, and that is, we have an invoice here to approve from the Collins Center. It's a total of $5,008.10. $3,500 is the balance of the recruiting agreement, and $1,508.10 are additional expenses per the agreement. And the additional expenses are itemized on the spreadsheet here, which include mileage, three trips, advertising, and background checks, printing and advertising. So subtotal is travel, $60.48, subtotal other, which includes the background checks and advertising in the ICMA, is a total of $1,146, and administrative cost of $301.62, for a total of $1,508.10. Can I have a motion, Mr. O'Leary, and maybe put that in the record there, we need to approve that?
Mr. Chairman, I move to authorize a payment of $5,008 to the Edward J. Collins Junior Center for Public Management for our services rendered.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. O'Leary, seconded by Mr. Fody. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? unanimous. Old and new business, Mr. O'Leary.
Just one thing, Mr. Chairman, and that is to congratulate Coach Frank Carey on his unbelievable achievement.
Achievement.
Of having the, being the winningest high school baseball coach in Massachusetts history, and also to acknowledge his 47 years of service as a coach here in North Reading, and as having recently announced that he will be retiring after this season. So we wish him Godspeed, we congratulate him profusely, I mean, he has done a tremendous job with this program for all those years, and enjoyed much success, and we wish him much continued success in whatever endeavors he chooses to take on, and I'm sure he's not through. So, just like to acknowledge that, and wish him well in his retirement, and thank him very much for his years of service here, to the North Reading Hornets. He put us on the map. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Yule?
Yes. Well, I have nothing old, because I'm new, so I have new things to think about, and I just want to say to the entire board that I'm very excited about working with you, becoming a part of the solutions that you're bringing forward. I know that all of you have been working hard, and I think Mr. Delaney, my predecessor, has worked extremely hard to do good things for the community, and I want to be a part of that with this board, so I'm looking forward to just going, being part of the team, and getting us to do good things for the community. So that's what I'm looking forward to.
I'm looking forward to putting good work, Mr. Is that it?
That's it.
Mr. Foley?
I have nothing tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Mr.?
Just a couple things, just follow up on the Hillview decision. We gotta make sure Jackie updates that license and gets it back for us to sign it. So if anybody, if we can get her, I will try to follow up with her, but if anybody's driving by Town Hall once it's ready, I'm gonna ask her to send us an email, and we can at least get three signatures on it before Sunday, that'll allow him to go ahead and do it on Sunday.
Okay.
All right, so be on the lookout for that email.
Mr. Chairman, so that, you can do electronically now?
No, not on the licenses.
Oh, okay.
No, so you just have to swing by, see Jackie during the day, and just throw your signature on it. We need to get at least three before Sunday.
Okay.
And I just also wanted to update folks, and Mr. Karucci, feel free to step up and help me on this, but the damage to the course continues on. I don't know, I'm gonna say it's...
Vandalism.
Vandalism is continuing. If you've been out there lately, you'll notice the white fence, that beautiful picket fence that we had on both sides of the driver range is completely down, gone, they knocked that down completely, they continue to throw the flags into the water, and I could go on with a list of things. And all I'm gonna say to the public is, you know, try to understand where your children are at night, if they're coming home, you know, have an idea where they are, and if you know anything, can you please step forward, because this has to, this has to stop. The damage has become excessive, to the point where it's spending a lot of money, the Hillview's money, to continue to repair the fences and the hole, the T-boxes, and amongst many other things. I just mentioned it tonight because I think the public needs to be aware, I don't think it gets enough play, enough publicity of all the issues that are going on down there, and I ask the public to just become more aware. And I will give a lot of credit to the police department, they spent a lot of time and energy, the detectives have, I think they're doing the best they can, try to identify where the problems lie. So I just wanna make sure everyone knows that. A few weeks ago, or a few meetings ago, we had granted additional money for the CPC to do the flyover, and thank you for the board for supporting that effort. Couple days following that, they received a call from the flyover company saying that they did a review, a quality control review, of what they've already done, and because of the bad weather that we had in the rain, delaying the flights to complete the flyover, when they looked at their camera pitches, they, the leave, the leave growth was pretty extensive, because of the delay they had in the, due to weather, so the picture quality isn't there, so they're gonna hold off now in doing North Reading until probably about April. So I don't want you guys to think that they're not gonna go through it, they are, CPC's still working with them to get it all locked in for an April timeframe, hopefully by then the, excuse me, let me make sure I have my dates right, yeah.
You're talking about April next year?
Yeah, till next year, April next year.
Next year.
And that's, so that's ongoing, it should still fall within the budget timeframe that we have the money authorized. And the last thing is the check trash. If you recall, a year ago, we approved the change in the barrel amounts, limitations from four to three, and now come one July, effective, it's going from three to two, thirty-five gallon barrels. Not sure how we get the news out, but I think we should at least make an effort.
There was a notice in the bills that just came out for the trash.
Oh, I haven't even opened mine yet, so.
Good, good, I just wanna make sure, but it would be good if we got the news and announcements
through, when we post it, if we can get the information out.
I thought the notice was pretty clear, so unless, unless you're like you and just throw the bill in the bucket or whatever.
I haven't looked, I haven't opened it yet.
Yeah.
I haven't opened it yet, it's been busy.
Yeah, it's in there, Michael.
And the last thing, I just wanna congratulate, my son graduated high school yesterday from St. John's Prep.
You too.
So officially, I officially have a college student, a college loan, so, or college loan, I should say, college payment. So congratulations, Samantha.
Very good, congratulations, Michael.
Thank you.
So this is just a brief update on my communications, I did have a meeting with Mr. Gilberto, we are scheduled for an executive session tomorrow night to hopefully close on a contract with him, and then we'll make it public. And I will be getting to the board prior to our meeting tomorrow night, his feedback on my conversation, just so you'll have it in advance, okay? So we're meeting at six o'clock tomorrow, and hopefully we can bring that to some agreement and close with Mr. Gilberto. He's very excited, we had a great conversation, asked a lot of questions about where things are going in town, and I think we spent more time talking about some of the activities and the things that are going on, some history behind the school project, things like that versus his contract itself. So I'm very enthusiastic about that. We have an executive session tonight as it relates to litigation, and at this point, and I entertain a motion to adjourn our regular meeting into an executive session for the purposes of discussing litigation, and to invite Mr.?
Karucci, Mr. Delaney.
Karucci and Mr. Delaney to our meeting, since they're part and parcel to the information that we're gonna discuss, and that we adjourn, out of executive session for the sole purpose of adjourning.
Mr. Chairman, I move to enter into executive session for the purposes of litigation strategy, and such discussions in open session will have a detrimental impact on the town, and further, the board is likely to return to open session for adjournment, and includes secondary school building committee members, Mrs. Karucci and Delaney.
Second.
Now, we'll take a five-minute break, allow North PM to...
Roll call.
Vote first, Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Yule?
Aye.
Mr. Fode?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Two.